Good evening and welcome to the Grand Prairie City Council meeting for Monday, June 10th, 2013. I'd ask everyone in attendance to rise and join us in singing "Oh, Canada."
(Music)
Thank you to the National Film Board for the images of our country and to our very own Grand Prairie Boys Choir for the audio. Let it take us to the adoption of the previous council meeting minutes. Counselor Crokin.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move the minutes of the city council meeting held May 27th, 2013, be adopted.
Thanks very much, Counselor Crokin. Did anyone note any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Seeing nothing, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. We'll move on to the adoption of the agenda. The motion for the adoption of the agenda. Counselor Crokin.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move council adopt the agenda as presented.
Thanks very much, Counselor Crokin. Any discussion or debate on the agenda? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries as well. And that takes us to the delegation portion of our agenda. This is an opportunity for anybody to come forward and address counsel on any community-related matter other than the matters that are subject of a public hearing later on in the agenda. So is there anybody that would like to speak or address counsel on a matter that is not a public hearing matter? I'd ask again. We do have this time at every regular city council meeting where anybody in the community can come forward and speak to counsel. We certainly want to encourage the public to take advantage of it when the opportunity or when the need arises. But it doesn't look like we have anybody coming forward tonight to speak on anything other than perhaps some folks on public hearing business. So I'll close the delegation portion of our agenda and we'll move on to public hearings. Item 6.1, Bylaw C.1228A, VLA Montrose Area Redevelopment Plan Amendment and Bylaw C.1100-195 Land Use Bylaw Amendment. And I can imagine I'll call this public hearing into order and look for an introduction from Mr. Walton.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're recommending that Bylaw C.1228A, which is an amendment to the VLA Montrose Area Redevelopment Plan and Bylaw C.1100-195, which is an amendment to the land use bylaw, be given second and third readings. Wade Green Tree, on behalf of the landowners, has submitted applications to amend the VLA Montrose Area Redevelopment Plan to change the designation of the site on Figure 5 Future Land Use Concept from mixed-use to semi-detached residential and to amend the land use bylaw to create a new DC-11 site-specific direct control district and change the zoning of the site from the existing DC-5 to this new DC-11. The purpose of the amendment is allow semi-detached residential development in accordance with the drawings that form part of the proposed DC-11 district on a direct control basis. The site comprises six lots located on the south side of 109th Avenue between 99th Street and 100th Street. Although there are six lots, they're consolidated onto four titles. So historically, there have only been four homes on the site. Two single detached dwellings are located on the east side of the site and the west two properties are actually vacant at this moment. The area to the north across 109th Avenue is a commercial area containing an automotive repair business and a two-story retail office building. The area to the west is also commercial and contains a strip mall-type building that fronts onto 100th Street and the back of the building faces onto the west side of the site. The area to the south across gravel lane is a mix of residential and commercial uses. The residential portion contains a small apartment building and a single-family house and the commercial area contains a parking lot for the commercial development further to the west. The Nordic Hall, Community Hall, is located to the east across 99th Street and the area further to the east on both sides of 109th Avenue is comprised of single detached dwellings. The current land use zone that applies to the site is a DC-5 Site-Specific Development Control. This district was created for a very specific direct control development that was proposed for the east half of the site. The district establishes a specific design for the building, including ground floor commercial and two stories of residential above. The VLA Montrose Area Redevelopment Plan identifies the site for mixed-use development comprising ground floor commercial with residential above and therefore the existing zoning is consistent with the area redevelopment plan. The application proposes to change the mixed-use designation to a new semi-detached residential infill designation that would support the proposed zoning change. I have not identified it in the report, but we are attempting to fix an inconsistency on the map at this time as well. Between the map and the text in the area redevelopment plan, on the map, the map currently refers to a different area as infill residential, whereas the text refers to that same area as small lot residential. And therefore, we are proposing to do that map change as well so that those two designations are consistent. Appendix A of the area redevelopment plan contains architectural standards and guidelines that apply to new development and redevelopment in the planned area. Additional standards and guidelines apply to each of the uses listed in Figure 5. In order to implement these architectural standards and guidelines as development regulations, they were added to the land use bylaw as Schedule H, VLA Montrose Area Redevelopment Plan overlay. And the report then lists a number of relevant provisions that are in both the area redevelopment plan and the land use bylaw overlay. The proposed DC-11 district has been written to allow only a very specific development shown on the site plan and elevation drawings and the building materials and color schedule that form part of the DC district. The applicant has sought to comply with the architectural requirements for new development contained in Section 401 and 402 of the overlay in the design of development by including amongst other things varieties of roof types, incorporating porches with different roof lines, providing projecting balconies, primary and accent materials and colors, not having blank walls facing the street, et cetera. Building siding colors and materials and door styles are also varied from building to building. These are shown on the elevation drawings in the building material color list that form part of the district. The development proposal would increase the number of dwelling units on the site from four, which had previously been there, to 18 in the form of nine front-to-back semi-detached buildings. A single-wide driveway would be at the front of each unit facing onto 109th Avenue, which is typical of the single-family residential in the neighborhood. Additional parking will be provided off the rear lane, which will result in two onsite parking stalls for each dwelling unit, which is the same parking standard that applies to all single and semi-detached dwell development in the city. Proposed amendments would allow for residential infill development of the site located near downtown. The development concept proposes to increase the number of units on the site from four to 18 while retaining the existing low-density residential appearance and character of the site. We did advertise the public hearing as required. The applicant also held an open house prior to first reading of the proposed amendments. And comment forms that were returned to the applicant after that open house are attached to this report as attachment two. And in addition, I believe you have two letters in front of you that we received just in the last week. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thanks very much, Mr. Walton. So this is the public hearing portion. We would now call for presentations or submissions, and we'll start with those in support of the applications. So if anybody would like to come forward and speak and make a presentation in support of the application, they'd be welcome to come forward. We'll have an opportunity for questions after the delegation speak.
Thank you very much, Mr. Walton, Mr. Mayor, council members and administration. My name is Wade Green Tree with Green Tree Land Solutions. This is my client, Norman Lefler. And obviously, we're here to speak in behalf of this particular rezoning. Mr. Lefler came to me last year to discuss the particular lots in question, as right now they're zoned to have apartment and commercial mix there. And some of the reasons why we needed to change that or my client felt it necessary to change was simply the economics of building an apartment building right now with the cost of construction escalating. Didn't make it feasible to do that particular project, coupling that with the fact that there is right around 11,000 square feet of commercial that would go between the two buildings there. And there's probably about 85 or so leasable spaces within about a 12 or 13 block space there. It simply didn't work. The numbers didn't work. The fact that right now there's no more affordable housing grants from the government, which would have factored into the reason why I'm building apartments, the ongoing maintenance and taxes, utility costs for having apartment. The numbers just simply didn't work. So it came down to a decision of whether just simply to leave the lots blank and empty and have them sitting there basically collecting garbage and being kind of an eyesore, or to look at an alternative approach to this particular piece of land, which was to rezone it to accommodate the units that my client wants to put there at this time. And as Mr. Walton already mentioned, we went, because a lot of work has been done in the VLA redevelopment plan, and it's a very, very good piece of work. And we really wanted to respect the work that went into that. And after having the open house and talking to all the residents, I came out, it was certainly apparent that they had a great sense of pride and were very concerned about their community, and it was really good to see. So when we worked through the process, we worked through the bylaw and the plan, we wanted to make sure that wherever we could, you know, the list that he mentioned there before, but other things, making sure we plant new trees and having new buildings look like single-family homes onto the street, making sure there's adequate green space, parking, making sure that there's different elevations with the buildings and different facades. All those things, we really tried to make sure that we had in place to be able to ensure that this didn't look completely wrong and out of the taste for the area that was already there. Related to that, right out of Section 2.4 in the VLA Area Redevelopment Plan, it talks about the area intent and appropriateness of particular projects. And there were several things that this particular product satisfied. One, the land use, the site, it encourages in the particular, the bylaw there to have, let's see here, you want to have high-density housing or multiple-unit dwellings adjacent to single dwellings should not be permitted in this particular on the map there, if you remember that. There, it's only kitty-corner to one single-family home. It's next to the Nordic Hall, the commercial and multifamily buildings. So it works well with the land use intent there. Urban design, one of the things they mentioned here was to try to keep all the buildings as low as possible. This actually brings the height down from a three-story building to regular one-story units. And parking capacity, which asks that it's not an afterthought, has been planned in the whole product and the project accommodates for parking as per the bylaw. Within this, we went through a couple of different ideas as far as what we would put on this piece of land. Came down to the back-to-front semi-detached units mainly to make it look like it's single-family homes, because along 109th Street there, further down the road, there's single-family homes. And this is trying to keep in line with that look, as well as the proximity to the parks, restaurants, shopping, churches, schools, bus stops, all the rest. But it makes this probably the best spot in the entire VLA area. This is the only place that this product would work, in our opinion. It was already zoned for something that was a higher density, so this isn't moving away from that. And, you know, the fact that we're coming down from the amount of dwelling units addressed a lot of the resident concerns that we heard as well, which we'll get to in a minute. I also spoke with the team at crime prevention, talked to them about what's currently there and our proposed plan, and they were really excited about that. They said, you know, it meets eight or nine of the tenants that relate to crime prevention through having eyes on the street, having territoriality that people who are supposed to be in that space are actually in that space. Sprucing up the area doesn't create crime generators. It's a good land use mix. It's the right spot for that. And the capacity, obviously, the area can support this intended use. As Mr. Walton mentioned, back on May 1st, we did have an open house, and we had 14 people come to that that signed in anyway. And out of that, we had 11 different comment sheets back. And out of that, seven were supportive or didn't have any problem with our plan. There was three that were against and one that was for, but he thought we should have two-story buildings in there. And from those, I'm not sure if you read them, but we went through that, and the top main concern seemed to be snow removal, parking and traffic, of which I thought was kind of a general issue for the most part. But we've, you know, snow removal, the city is, and what's nice about this is that it's all addressed in our proposal. Snow removal, obviously, the city cleans the sidewalk or the road and the lanes and the residents required to clear whatever is their property. Parking, all our parking bylaw requirements have been met. And if anything, we brought down the parking requirements quite dramatically because of the fact that now there's no commercial involved in there. So there's going to be a lot less parking throughout the day. And then traffic congestion, I'm assuming that if traffic would have been a concern in the first place, that it would have been addressed or not. The original three-story building wouldn't have been allowed if traffic was a concern on the city's part. Some other concerns, they didn't want this particular change to apply to any other part of the VLA area, which of course it doesn't, and that the plan agrees and looks like the architectural controls that are set out, first of all, in the overall plan, as well as that my client, when he does build his buildings, will adhere to them, which of course he will. In all, you know, we feel that we've done a great deal of work in trying to accommodate and make sure we meet the standards that are set out and worked closely with planning to ensure that this product looks good in that area. It's a piece of land that was already identified for higher use density. And so the proposed changes don't actually change the intent, it's simply a different way to achieve that end. So that's all I have to say about that. Thank you very much for your time. And yeah, that's all for me.
Okay. Still an opportunity for questions for the delegation? If any members of council have questions for the delegation. Counselor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Wade, just a couple of questions. When you look at it, maybe Dan, you can throw up the map of the area in question here, the lot. And you look at a lot of commercial there already in the apartment building. And so commercials pretty well taken over. And I know we talked about development and infilling, and this is mixed use. And there's probably a reason why that was proposed and changed. And now you want to go back to like these duplexes, 18 of them, and it will be a problem for snow removal, definitely, because the majority, even if they consider the idea okay, a lot of them are very worried about parking the snow removal. They're 30-foot lots, right? With duplexes. So it's very tight. I just, I see where changes happen in Grand Prairie, where commercials may be taking over the area and the older homes are gone, chance for mixed use, for more business to come in. And if we do this, that totally takes that chance out.
So Counselor McLean...
That's a question. If we do this, there'll be no mixed use. It's duplexes.
Yeah. I was having a discussion today, thank you for that question, Counsel McLean, about mixed use and how there isn't a lot of it in Grand Prairie. And there's probably good reasons for that, which is another entire discussion. The concern with building commercial right now in there is that a lot of the leasable space in that is in that $14 to $18 range per square foot. If you were to build a brand-new commercial building with apartments and the construction costs right now, you couldn't, you wouldn't make any money, for lack of a better explanation, at those prices. You would have to ask at least $20, $22, $23 bucks a square foot to actually make it worth. And because of all the competition in that area, you simply would sit there with an empty commercial building. So I understand definitely it was meant for mixed use. Whether that's the right spot, I mean, all the conditions at the time, you know, things change, right? You know, the government grants aren't available for the apartment buildings. So that changes the whole financial feasibility of it. There's probably other areas in town that would be far more suited to mixed use. I don't feel that that is the place for it.
Okay. See others in the queue here. Counsel Monroe.
Thanks, Mayor Given. Wade, Norm, I understand that that lane is currently a gravel lane in the back. Is there any intention on paving that? Or I imagine in the wintertime, or I guess, pardon me, in the spring, it might get a little bit muddy back there if you're having to accommodate parking from the laneway.
Thank you, Counsel Monroe. The, I'm smiling because it's going to come up, I guess, in the VLA Area Redevelopment Plan, it actually specifically states that the city will pave all the lanes north of 109th Avenue. So what that means and how that works out is, I guess, another conversation for a different time. That's not directly addressed in our plan right now.
Okay. So it's your opinion, and it's not the developer's responsibility for paving, would be the city's?
It's according to the VLA Area Redevelopment Plan, it states that in there.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Crokin?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I know we're moving on our transit and trying to move more people towards transit to go downtown or go to the mall or whatever. How far is the closest transit bus stop, I guess you'd call it?
Within a half a block, if I remember right. I think it's on 109th. There is a stop there.
Yeah.
Around Kentucky Fried Chicken or somewhere there? Okay.
Yeah, there's one down there. That's right. There's other ones as well, but that's the one that stands out to me.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions for the delegation? Counselor Raffin.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Guys, and maybe admin, a number of people talked about the snow and where are you going to put snow. And so I'd like somebody to speak to that, please, in terms of the lanes. In the front, I can understand, but in the lanes, what happens to the snow in terms of the snow removal?
So since the delegation's here, do you want to take a crack? Then council can ask that question when we have a round of questions for administration after.
Part of the snow, there is a little bit of green space in the back. That snow could be piled up. Also, depending on whether the parking, you know, all three parking stalls are being used, that would also be another spot. Or it could be just plain simply hallway. That alley space is really no different than other subdivisions where the back alleys are being used and there's parking in the back. So that's the best answer I can give.
Thank you. Any further questions for the delegation? Counsel O'Toole?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I was just concerned with the, geez, I had it on my mind and I lost it now.
We can come back to Counsel O'Toole if somebody else is in queue. Counsel Rice.
Is it your client's intent to develop this, and I don't know if I'm using the right word, but like a condo association where each property owner would pay in an amount each month for upkeep or whatever? Or is it just, here, you bought your house, goodbye, we're done, we're out of here? And I guess I ask that because then it seems to me that, and I will ask this of our staff if it's possible, but that we would sell you the lane and that would become part of the property of the complex. And that would get rid of our problems in terms of snow removal. It would become yours.
Very generous of you. I'll let my client handle that.
I guess that could be a possibility, depending on the price. Also, keep in mind that there is a large parking lot in the back that belongs to the KFC Center, and that is, the snow is all constantly removed from there. So most of that back alley is already paved on that side, and it's cleared away all the time.
Thank you.
And to answer your question...
Oh, yeah. And to answer your question about condo association, actually, I would be the owner of all of them.
Oh, okay.
So until the day that I decide to sell, I will be the owner and the guy that takes care of it. So I fully intend on taking care of it.
Any further questions, Counsel O'Toole? Sorry, I turned you off there.
So let me just clarify before we go on. So you're not going to sell each individual unit?
At the moment, I have no intention of selling those units.
So there'll be rental union?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Counsel O'Toole?
Thank you very much. How long would it take for this building complex to be manufactured, built?
Once I start, if everything goes well, within a year and a half, it would be completed.
So 18 months, people should be living it?
Yeah.
Okay. And if things go well here for you, when do you see you think yourself could start on it?
The earliest I would start is in the fall.
So it would be a project that you would like to see started this year?
Yes, if I could, yes. I have other projects on the go at the moment, so...
So you're not going to see anybody in these things till probably 2016?
No, that would be 2015.
Okay, 15, sorry.
Yeah. It could even be 14, if everything goes well.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. Any further questions for the delegation? I don't see anybody in the queue. Okay. Thanks very much, Sean.
Thank you very much.
So this is still the delegation portion of our agenda. It's, as I said before, an opportunity for anybody to come forward and, excuse me, of the public hearing, delegation portion of the public hearing, an opportunity for anybody that would like to come forward, if there's anybody else that would like to speak in favor of the proposal, now would be the time. And I'll check the other side. If there's anybody that would like to speak in opposition to the proposed amendments, now would be the time to come forward. And I'll ask one last time if there's anybody that would like to come forward to speak to this proposal before I close the public delegation, presentation submission portion. I don't see anybody. And so before we close the public hearing, there may be some questions for administration. Counsel Rice.
Is it possible that we could look at making him a really good deal on that lane? You know, it seems to me that would be, you know, being penny foolish and pound wise. Is there any way we can, I don't know, table this for a week or so while you explore that possibility? Snow removal becomes a serious concern.
Mr. Walton, do you have any comment on the future use of that lane?
Certainly, we would have to look at whether other properties are using that lane. And by closing it and selling it to one particular landowner, other property owners obviously then would not have access to it. So that process would have to be gone through just to make sure that, you know, that we're not cutting off somebody else's access to the road by selling a lane. Having said that, if that is, if that turns out to not be a problem, then certainly the city and the applicant, I guess, could work out an arrangement for purchasing the lane.
If I could, Counsel Rice, along with that, are there any utilities in the lane?
I am not aware of what, if any, utilities are in the lane.
Okay. So I do see others with questions.
Well, I guess, yeah, my concern is I don't want to tie this development up. But I also don't want to get into a situation similar to what we have a couple of instances of where the people are living with an ongoing winter nightmare. So...
Thanks, Counsel Rice. So others with questions for administration. Counselor Monroe?
Thanks, Mayor Given. If this development did go through, how soon would we be, I guess, compelled to pave that lane? Or is it totally a budget item that could go on for years before we get to it?
Mr. Walton?
I don't believe that the area redevelopment plan does make reference to the city paving these lanes north of 108th Avenue. It doesn't, I believe, provide any sort of timeframe. It essentially is just like a blanket statement, the city will pave these lanes. So we haven't budgeted for it. We haven't created any timeline. So we, we haven't, we haven't budgeted for it, we haven't created any timeline for it, or any of that nature.
Thanks. I see the community growth director has a comment. Ms. Ferguson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just in, in response to the question about disposing of the laneway, certainly, again, we have the tools, we have the procedures and policies in place to deal with that. The municipal government act also does indicate that we will dispose a property at fair market value, so we would be looking, otherwise, it would have to be advertised, and we would have to look at the city's need in utilities and, and those types of things for that laneway.
Thanks very much, Ms. Ferguson. Okay, see, Councilor Cogan?
Thanks, Mayor Given. Could you tell me, Mr. Walton, that like, the cleaning of the back lane, I, I would hate to see any disruption. Do you, do you feel there would be disruption if that was owned privately?
We wouldn't clean.
Mr. Walton?
Through the mayor, the, I guess, if, if the city was looking at selling this lane, the lane would function as a, essentially would function as a driveway for the entire It would legally, I guess, be only for the access of the property owner. Actually, I'm going to stop there and ask you to clarify your question, because I, I think I've lost you.
Yeah, no, no, I, I just, if there were going to be any fences or barriers or whatever, I prefer the city to be doing the cleaning there. They've got the machinery and they, they're going to do that area, they're, they're doing it. And I thought if you were suggesting maybe to sell the lane, I'd prefer that they do their developing, or what they're really good at, and they've shown experience in that, then buying laneways would be.
I think it was your seatmate that's brought up the selling of the lane, not administration.
Oh, okay.
So you look, you can look to your right for where that comment came from.
She's making way too much noise. She's kicked me already.
Through the mayor, the, if the city was, if the city was looking to sell the lane to a, any person, that person would become responsible for, for cleaning that land, because it would become a driveway for that particular development. And then the city obviously would not have any responsibility for cleaning, and probably shouldn't be cleaning it.
Okay, fair, thanks.
Council Radver?
Thank you, Mayor Given. So I'll ask, admin now, speak to the manageability of snow removal in the back lane, please.
I see our community safety director from, to speak to that. Ms. Donnelly?
Thanks, maybe I'll throw some two cents and try and help answer some of the questions flying around. And there is currently gas line underground and overhead power in that lane that would have to be addressed if we were to dispose of it. And it, it's, from a snow removal, typically what, what we do when it comes to lanes is we like to be able to push the snow straight through, and then we typically, my understanding is we don't go back and open the driveways. So we just push it straight through and then we have to haul it out. And being it, right now, that lane goes straight through, that does make kind of work for us from a removal. But looking at the plans, if they have driveways along the entire length, I suspect that when they do their removal, they'll probably want to also haul it away. And so, in that area with the parking lot, and with them needing to clear all their stalls, there could be a fair number of different opportunities to get it out, whether it's the city or it's, or it's them cleaning up the driveways. So, so lanes are a challenge, but if they're straight and, and we can push straight through, that's the, the typical approach.
Thank you.
Council Rice?
Maybe, to Mrs. Donnelly again, would it make more sense, I am really, really uncomfortable with this alley, would it make more sense, or, and maybe Mrs. Ferguson can jump in and help too, to make the alley a street? For us to, a streetette, or something like that? I mean, we don't typically plow alleys.
We do.
Oh, on a, on a very low priority basis, I'm sorry, really low pri, once we've done everybody's front street twice, we get to the lanes. It's a real low.
I think Ms. Donnelly had a response to what our standard is on how we clean lanes and alleys. Ms. Donnelly?
My understanding is the equipment that we use in the lanes is different typically than the equipment we use on the front roads, and that we have specific equipment for doing lanes. So it's doing its own thing on the lanes. And so, of course, we have to start one end of the city and work towards the other with that piece of equipment. We have more.
A piece of equipment?
I'm not sure if we got one or two, but I am not sure about the amount, but I understand it's a different type, it's a different piece of equipment than the front's. And we are set up better for the front, as far as the number of crews, so, and because we, we have a lot more front roads. So changing the designation of the, the road won't, it's, it's the construction of it and the equipment we use that really.
Thank you.
Any further questions for administration? I've, I've got a couple, if I could. Mr. Walton, can you tell me, did the previous plan identify what the population density was, or what the previous proposal, what the population density would have been? And if it did, can you contrast that with this proposal?
Through the chair, or through the mayor. I'll, I'll have, I'll have the director. No, it's actually, it's actually a separate page. The current zoning, we're, we're actually bringing up the, we're actually going to, we're calling up the current zoning for the property right now. The existing, there we go. The existing zoning is for a single, like a three-story building, the ground floor commercial, and then two floors of residential above. My recollection is, is that the, each, each of the floors would have, my recollection is each floor would have twelve units. I could be, I could be wrong. So the building itself would be twenty, would be twenty-four single-family units.
There was two buildings proposed, and you would have had thirty-eight units in total.
So, and just for those, we've got an answer from the applicant from the crowd, and so the answer was, I'm sorry, thirty, thirty-eight units in total, under the previous proposal of two multi-story. Thank you.
You would have had a commercial as well.
Yeah, thanks very much for providing that. Just want to make sure, because you're not on the mic, so if somebody's watching, they wouldn't be able to hear it.
Sure, but that, Mr. Mayor, yes. The, the way the zoning actually works is, I mean, it, it designates the entire site DC five, which is for two buildings, but in fact, the zoning really only allows for the construction of the first building, and that a secondary zoning would have to be allowed, to be approved to allow for the, for a second, what would expect to, I guess, be an identical building. So I guess each unit, each building would have nineteen units for a total of thirty-eight plus whatever amount of ground floor commercial was proposed, so.
Thanks very much, appreciate the help in getting that answer.
Sorry, you didn't have the answer to that, Mr. Mayor.
Did administration, has administration done a calculation of the difference in potential tax revenue from the two styles of development? The, the semi-detached that's proposed tonight versus the previously proposed mixed use?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Can you, do you have any way of estimating the scale of, of difference or similarity?
Yeah, I would, I would, I, I don't know if I could, I don't know if I could do that. I don't, I don't believe I'm qualified to do that.
Fair enough, okay, thank you very much. I see Council McLean has another question.
Thanks, Mayor Given. Just one question, too, like new developments for thirty-foot lots, the back alleys paved by the developers, are not new developments?
I believe so, yes.
And it's owned by the city afterwards?
The lane is owned by the city.
Yeah. Okay, and that would change my decision one way or the other on the back alley, but I just had to ask that. Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much, Council McLean. Okay, so this is our opportunity for questions for administration. After this portion of the, the public hearing is closed, we would move on to debate. So if there are no further questions, counsel for administration, then I will close the public hearing, and we move on to business arising from the public hearing. We had a number of items that need to have motions for a second reading. So if I could get a motion for a second reading for the first items, it's Council Gustafson.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll move the second reading be given to bylaw C. one-two-two-eight-A, being an amendment to the VLA Montrose Area Development Plan.
Okay, thanks very much, Council Gustafson. So with that motion on the table, it's open for discussion and debate. Discussion and debate from council. Seeing nobody ringing in, then I'll take the opportunity to say that I'll be voting in opposition to all the proposed amendments. I believe that this is the wrong style of development for us to be encouraging in the city. I believe that it's a downgrade in what we see for the future of our city. The previous vision was something that I certainly supported, and the vision that's contained in the VLA Area Redevelopment Plan, I believe, was a vision that was supported by the residents that worked on it for more than two years. This was not a part of that process. Again, remind council that it was a two-year-long process. And even when the last council had concerns about the density that was proposed in the plan, the reason the plan went forward was because council said, well, the residents have spoken, and this is what the plan is. This is one part of the plan that I did agree with, and I have to say that I think that we're selling ourselves short by going for the low-hanging fruit of trying to get something in there as quickly as we can. And I believe that the number of driveways is a problem that we face everywhere else around the city. We know exactly what that's going to lead to, and this is one where I have to vote my conscience, and I can't support, I can't support this proposed development or these rezonings, so I'll be voting against all of the other items, and I'd certainly encourage council to think a little bit about the future of Grand Prairie, what we'd like to see, rather than what we can get today. Any other discussion or debates? Council McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I meant to punch in, and sorry about that. Yeah, I will not be supporting it either. I think it's the wrong direction for the area, and when you build these type of units, you take away from maybe getting more density and more use out of the area, and they become all looking the same, the same, the same, the same, and it's, I believe, it's the wrong direction. And there's residents in this area spoke up against this, and have talked to me, and as well, I'm against the, the next one after, C. eleven-hundred-one-ninety-five. So I will be voting against it all.
Any further discussion or debate? Okay, seeing nobody else in the queue? Council Cogan?
Thanks, Mayor Given. You know, I'm not a world traveler, but I have been to England and Ireland, and they had, they had some visions over there, and they have blocks and blocks of apartments and, and affordable living. And the only reason you can tell the difference from them is that they've got different door colors, so that you know where you live, I guess. But I do know that we have an abundance of vacant, commercial, releasable property. And as the delegation had said, you'd have to be in the ten, twelve, fourteen dollars or in that area. And with the building costs today, it just, the dollars don't match up, and it's, it's not, it's not viable. Affordable housing, we do need affordable housing. There's, there's people that are, are being displaced right now from, from Rotary House. There's no place to go. This developer has shown in the past, on one hundred and eighth Avenue, and on ninety, I believe it's ninety-seventh Avenue, yes, I would have liked to have had a little higher density too. But there is other, other lands, and for this area, we've waited two, three years, four years, and nothing has happened. I'm, I'm happy to see that something has happened. There will be homes for a variety of single families and small families, and yes, the snow removal may be a problem, but I think this developer will understand that, that the only people that catch the heat is the city and the counselors. But seeing this is all going to be owned by one owner, I think a coffee discussion, one-to-one, would clear up all that snow. So I will be voting in favor of it. Is it ideal? Perhaps not. It's the best that we've had so far that is affordable, and will fill a demand that the city of Grand Prairie needs desperately.
Okay, any further discussion or debate? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. And that vote, sorry, my monitor doesn't work, that vote is concluded, and the motion carries. So we have a motion for a second reading? Excuse me, for third reading?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll move that third reading be given to bylaw C. one-two-two-eight-A, being an amendment to the VLA Montrose Area Redevelopment Plan.
Thanks very much, Council Gustafson. Opportunity for discussion and debate. Seeing nobody ringing into the queue, then I'll call for the vote. Looking for one more. Thank you. Thank you, and that motion carries. So we need a second reading for bylaw C. eleven-hundred-one-ninety-five, the land use bylaw amendment.
I'll move that second reading be given to bylaw C. eleven-hundred-one-ninety-five, being an amendment to the land use bylaw.
Thanks very much, Council Gustafson. Any discussion or debate on that land use bylaw amendment? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Council Gustafson?
Thank you. Finally, I'll read, I'll move that third reading be given to be law, bylaw C. eleven-hundred-one-ninety-five, being an amendment to the land use bylaw.
Thanks very much, Council Gustafson. Any discussion or debate on this third reading of the land use bylaw amendment? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. And that motion carries as well. Okay, so that concludes that piece of public hearing business. We move on to, well, we had no unfinished business. It would take us to item eight-point-one reports. Council Rice?
I move first reading of bylaw C. one-two-one-two-B, an amendment to the Arbor Hills Area Structure Plan.
Thanks very much, Council Rice. Any discussion or debate? Sorry, excuse me, it's first reading, there's no discussion or debate on first reading. I'll call for the vote. Thank you.
I move that Monday, July eighth, two thousand thirteen, at six-thirty PM in city council chambers, be established as the date, time, and location of the public hearing purposes for bylaw C. one-two-one-two-B.
Thanks very much, Council Rice. So a motion for a date, time, and location, any discussion as to date, time, and location? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That motion carries. That takes us to item eight-point-two, bylaw C. eleven-hundred-one-nine-seven, a land use bylaw amendment. Council Radver?
Mayor Given, do we usually have a quick introduction of these, even though they're just first reading and setting dates, or not? Am I mistaken?
Certainly, yeah, no, thanks, thanks very much, Council Radver, and my apologies. Sorry, Mr. Walton, you were probably prepared to go even on the last one. Could I ask, if, if I can, counsel, my, excuse me for speeding through a little bit too quickly. Mr. Walton, can you give us retroactively an introduction on that la, what that last one was? I know council members have read it, but for the members of the public that are watching, they might not be familiar with just the land use bylaw numbers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Helix Engineering, on behalf of a landowner, has applied for an amendment to the Arbor Hills Area Structure Plan to add a collector road extension to one hundred and second street north of one hundred and thirty-second Avenue. This will change the intersection from a all-directional T to an all-directional four-way, and, and the amendment would also change the future one hundred and third street, one hundred and thirty-second Avenue intersection, from an all-directional T to a right-in, right-out T intersection, and a related text change is also proposed for the bylaw. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks very much, Mr. Walton. And so now we're on to item eight-point-two, could you give us an introduction on that land use bylaw amendment?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Driver Advertising Systems has submitted an application to amend the land use bylaw to allow a two-sided static billboard to, to be developed on Lot ten, Block fifteen, Plan nine, seven-nine-two, one-seven-five-six, which is eighty-four oh-two, one hundred and twelfth street, in the Richmond Industrial Park. The land use bylaw does not allow billboards in the IG district, and therefore, this proposed amendment would allow a billboard only on this specific site in the IG district, and would not be applicable on IG zone lots. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thanks very much, Mr. Walton. So, I'm sorry, did we get, we didn't get the, I didn't get a time to get to that motion. So, Council Radver, thanks very much for that catch.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that first reading be given to bylaw C. eleven-hundred-one-ninety-seven, being an amendment to the land use bylaw.
Thanks very much, Council Radver. We'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Council Radver?
Thank you, and I would move that Monday, July eighth, two thousand thirteen, at six-thirty PM at city council chambers, be established as the date, time, and location of the public hearing purposes for bylaw C. eleven-hundred-one-ninety-seven.
Thanks very much, Council Radver. Any discussion as to date, time, and location of that proposed public hearing? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you, that motion carries. And we had item eight-point-three is another land use bylaw amendment, and maybe we could have an introduction from our legislative services manager? Well, Mr. Walton's prepared to do that, okay?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. In March, the General Government Services Committee passed a motion directing administration to develop amendments to- to develop amendments to the land use bylaw to include restrictions for candidate election signs under the Local Authorities' Elections Act. Administration has researched municipal election sign provisions and other land use bylaws and is proposing the amendment before you tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks very much, Mr. Welton. So can I get a motion for first reading? Council Monroe?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I'll move that first reading be given to bylaw C-1100-198, being an amendment to the land use bylaw.
Thanks very much, Council Monroe. So I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Council Monroe, could you, date, time, and location?
You bet. Thanks, Mayor Given. I'll move that Monday, July 8th, 2013, at 6:30 PM at city council chambers, be established as the date, time, and location for public hearing purposes of bylaw C-1100-198.
Thanks very much, Council Monroe. So will any discussion or debate on date, time, and location of that proposed public hearing? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. I believe that was all of our report items, and that takes us into committee business. And our first item of committee business was council committee of the whole minutes from May 22nd meeting. Councilor Radver?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council receive the minutes of the council committee of the whole meeting held May 22nd, 2013.
Thanks.
Just quick, just speaking to the motion, this committee of the whole meeting really was comprised of two parts. One was our discussion on election signs that will be resulting in the before-mentioned land use bylaw change, possibly. And the second was our continued discussion on the draft land use bylaw. Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much, Councilor Radver. So any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Did anyone note anything out of place in that set of minutes? Seeing nothing, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries, and that takes us to item 9.2, the Community Growth Committee. Councilor Gustafson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll move that council receive the minutes of the Community Growth Committee meeting held May 28th, 2013.
Thanks very much, Councilor Gustafson. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Did anyone, everything look in order to everybody? Seeing nothing out of place, I'll call for the vote. That motion carries. Councilor Gustafson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. We had one item on the, on that Community Growth Committee meeting was a rear yard deck, covered deck variance, and an in-camera meeting, which I will tell you about right now. I'll move that council reclassify lots seven and eight, Block 2, Plan 1410AC, from non-marketable to marketable. And issue a request for proposal that would be open for 30 days and includes the following criteria. The proposal meets the concepts within the South Avondale Area Redevelopment Plan and the Municipal Development Plan, design concept, including building footprint, relationship to the surrounding area, and parking, economic impact, and project timelines. Mayor Given, if I may, this is a chunk of property that the city's owned for quite some time, and it doesn't really fit into any of our master plans or transportation plans or anything that we're really aware of, so we've decided to let it go out for market.
Okay, thanks very much, Councilor Gustafson. Discussion or debate? Councilor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I just wanted administration to put it up, a map of the area we're talking about, up on the screen.
Sure. I think we probably have the technology to do that. Let's see, it just may take a second for me to...
Even better we have the staff skill.
Unfortunately, we only have one computer. We've got the skill, we've got the technology, but we've only got one computer that displays on the screen for right now. As I understand, with our council upgrades, they'll be able to have multiple computers that would show up. And I'm seeing...
Do we have it on the screen there?
Sure.
Where are my cursory corrections on these two lots?
Brian, is there a way to show up, like, the buildings, like, an aerial photo like we had the last?
Maybe we could use Google.
There we go.
All right.
Can we enhance that, just to bring up that block, please? A little bit more?
This just turned into an episode of CSI.
Okay, that's good there. Get rid of the bottom portion, so everybody can see it. Thanks, Brian. Now, a question I have about these lots, I understand where the city's going with this, and maybe a chance of potential development there, but now this whole area block, there was something built called a fourplex, all vinyl siding, where it was all commercial. So I want everybody to look at this, and I hope anybody watching this, and it was allowed to go ahead with a fourplex. And if you think that fits into downtown or to different development, I'm telling you, that's really off-ball. And if this is sold in another fourplex, and then it just sticks out like a sore thumb. For density, that's not working the right way. It should, so I just wanted to bring that up about this. Marketable, marketable how? And what kind of studies? Look, are you opening up for open to sell it? But what's the city's direction? Another fourplex, right near downtown, where we could have maybe a mixed use? I don't know. There's no direction on here to say what it could be used for, and this is close to downtown, and all you're going to have is another area where, and that whole block is one fourplex built two years ago, which sticks out like a sore thumb. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thanks very much, Council McLean. Councilor Radver?
Thank you, Mayor Given. So I'm certainly supportive of this motion. I think that it forges council the opportunity to be a bit choosy about what we want done there, and therefore, I think that's a good thing. My question is, for administration, tell me where, where is the, where is the part where the proposal speaks to what they're willing to pay for the lots? Is that part of the initial package? Does it come later?
Mr. Blavat?
So with the price of the lot, anytime we have an RFP at the city, a minimum of 35% of the criteria that we use for scoring has to be price. So the way we'll do that will be that whatever the highest price someone offers, we'll take that, and that'll set the bar for what, the top of the 35% range, and we'll use a percentage or prorate every other offer from then on to evaluate the price.
Good, thank you. I just want to ensure that that was part of the proposal. Thank you.
I think, Councilor Radver, the other part might be under the four criteria, economic impact. You could look at proposed purchase prices, part of the economic impact. Of course, the other would be how much taxes would your proposed development pay over the long term. Mr. Blavat?
If you'd like me to expand a little bit, we'll also be, the economic impact is one of the things we'll look at, which we'll be using a very similar formula, where the highest tax levy generated will set the bar for the highest, for the most points of economic impact, and that'll be prorated from then on for any other proposals that come forward.
Okay, thanks very much, Mr. Blavat. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? I'd just like to speak in support. Councilor McLean mentioned a concern about the one fourplex that is existing there. I think that the way that this proposal for marketing these properties is coming forward actually gives council the most oversight over what gets built there, because ultimately, we've set up some very specific criteria of who we would even consider selling it to, and so I think this is the most oversight that we could ever possibly have, unless we're going to build a building ourselves. And so I really believe that this will meet the, address the concerns that Council McLean raised. I mean, ultimately, we have to see what comes forward with the proposals, but I believe that this is the, a very secure way for the city to see proposals that meet the needs of what we're looking for, for the future of Grand Prairie, and I probably agree with Council McLean, it wouldn't be another fourplex or a row of semi-detached housing. Council McLean, I see that you're still in the queue.
Thank you, Mayor Given, and I'm not against this going out to be marketable. I just want to point some things out, because we just had one where, might reframe it, looks like Europe, but it costs a lot more building Europe and any vinyl siding, a lot of it. I do believe we have to really look at our downtown core and different areas of development and proper development, and I'm looking forward to being marketable, but if it just becomes a parking lot or a fourplex, well, it's kind of beats the purpose. So anyways, I'm for it, but just wanted to point it out.
Thanks very much, Council McLean. Council Crokin?
Thanks, Mayor Given, and I am for this also, and I'm not sure if it should be a fourplex or an eightplex, but I do understand and know very well that commercial property is, there's a lot of vacant commercial property, and there's a lot of need for multiple housing and affordable housing. So that plan, whatever comes to the city, we'll be able to decide at that time.
Okay, thanks, Council Crokin. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councilor Gustafson, anything else to highlight from that set of minutes?
Mayor Given, no, that's all we, that's all we talked about.
Okay, that was the whole agenda. Okay, we'll move on to item 9.3, the Community Living Committee meeting, the minutes from the May 28th meeting. Councilor Crokin, I think you were handling that set of minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Yes, I move council receive the minutes of the Community Living Committee meeting held May 28th, 2013.
Okay, thanks very much, Councilor Crokin. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Did anyone note anything out of place? Seeing nothing, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Council Crokin?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I move that council approve the attached framework for working with the Grand Prairie Aboriginal Circle of Services and further, that the proclamation to be signed during the National Aboriginal Celebration in Muska Seapark on June 23rd, 2013.
Okay, thanks very much, Council Crokin. Discussion or debate? Councilor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I was at this, of course, I said, on the committee meeting here, Community Living. I look forward to this. It's a positive step. The biggest amount I've ever seen in this chamber was from the Canadian Aboriginal community that were looking for homes for people that needed it, and it went another direction, and it was talked about the road being overfilled, because a certain area where the money, it doesn't matter if it's federal, provincial, or municipality, there was a building in town that they went in too quick, and now they're out, and a lot of loss of money, it doesn't matter where it came from, because of that move. And I believe working with this group would be very important down the road of other issues. So biggest we ever had in front of us was Aboriginal talking about us, let us still be in there, and it wasn't, they didn't get it, and some of that money didn't go the right way. So I'm just going to speak directly as that. So I'm looking forward to this, working more.
Thanks, Council McLean. Council Rice?
The only thing I'm concerned about in the proclamation is the requirement that a member will attend all their meetings. Like, I think we need to really think about that before we include it, because I know we probably get three to four requests a month for council to sit on various boards and committee, and it exceeds our capacity, and I guess I would like to see that pulled out of the proclamation before it's signed, or at least council have an in-camera discussion on it.
Sure, Council Rice, I believe the intent, and actually, I think, very specifically is administration, the intent is to make a better administrative connection rather than a council connection with the committee, so...
Okay.
So, and I think administration's already identified the individuals that if this went forward would do that. So it's not a requirement or a request for additional council representation.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor McLean?
But would it be a good idea? Because this last idea was a lot of administration brought to us, and it went south on another issue. I know it's separate of this, but I maybe like Hahn Rice's idea that maybe council could be there.
Counsel Rice's idea has taken on a life of its own. Well done, Counsel Rice.
So, just saying.
So the motion is to approve the proposed framework and the proclamation as presented. Just to speak to this, I think that this is actually a very important point in history for the city of Grand Prairie. I don't believe we've ever had a formalized working relationship with such a broad representative cross-section of our urban Aboriginal community and service providers and organizations, and so I think that this is something that we should all be very supportive of and very proud of. I think it also lays out that the city of Grand Prairie is making a commitment to consider the Aboriginal perspective when we're making decisions, and that we commit to ensuring that our processes are open to these organizations. And so I certainly want to, certainly want to highlight the fact that this is such an important moment. I'm appreciative of the fact that the Japakos organization was working with the city and that our city administration was able to bring this forward. I think it's a very important step. If there's no further discussion or debate, I'll call for the motion, call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counsel Crokin?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I move council adopt the bear silhouette as the new logo for Muska Seapark. And I'm sorry, I don't have a picture of the logo. It was on our last, our last agenda. Did you have one there?
I think we've got it up on one of these admin computers there now.
There we are.
So this is, Counsel Crokin, this is the image that was previously approved to be at the entrance to Muska Seapark, the 102nd entrance that's being redeveloped right now, and I think this came to us at the committee level, because administration was, wanted to clarify whether council's intent was to have this image reused as they redo, refurbish any of the other parts of the park. Is that correct?
That's correct. 102nd and 102nd Avenue, that corner there.
Thanks very much, Counsel Crokin. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Okay, that motion carries with one opposed. We'll move on to 9.3.3, the 2013 Parks Improvement Funding allocations. Counselor Crokin?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I move council approve allocation of the 2013 Parks Improvement Grant funding be allocated as follows. Number one, Grand Prairie Cricket Association, $7,755. Number two, the Mountview Neighborhood Safety Team, $4,000. Number three, Avondale North Neighborhood Safety Team, $5,300. The Royal Oaks Neighborhood Society Team, $5,200. Swan Even School Parent Association, $2,745. And further, that the Grand Prairie Cricket Association be provided an extra $5,000 from the recreation and sport budget. Just to speak to that, this Lindsey Juniper had, gave us a, an overview on these. This is a $25,000 budget to assist community groups and not-for-profits within the city, and the last $5,000 was from the recreation and sport budget.
Okay, thanks very much, Counsel Crokin. Open for discussion or debate on that round of Parks Improvement Funding. Seeing none, no discussion, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries unanimously. Counsel Crokin, I think you've got a couple of items left.
Yes, thanks, Mayor Given. I move council approve the revised policy 203, reduced costs, free use of facilities and equipment.
Okay, thanks, Counsel Crokin. Discussion or debate on the motion? I wonder if administration could refresh us exactly what the details of that heading was. Community Living Director?
Thank you, Your Worship. Essentially, this policy lays out the ability for a group using a city facility to have fees either reduced or waived, and gives that authority to the facility manager. What we're adding in is the ability for that group, if they're agreed by the decision to appeal it, to basically create an appeal mechanism, that they could appeal the manager's decision, going to the director first, and then the Community Living Committee as a second round of appeal.
Great, thanks very much for that clarification. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing nothing, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counsel Crokin?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I move council request the mayor send a letter to the Minister of Infrastructure inquiring about the possible sale of the former Grand Prairie Young Offenders Center facility. Just to speak briefly to that, this is just our formal request, since the province has abandoned the property, which is, it's a great piece of property, and it does have a soccer field that we're presently using for the schools at the back, but this is having the mayor just do a formal request to Minister Drysdale and the Government of Alberta.
Okay, thanks very much, Counsel Crokin. Open for discussion or debate? Council McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just a question, I look forward to sending this letter and it becoming something positive than it was maybe negative and sitting there empty and not being used. I don't know where this would go through administration, maybe corporate services I don't know where this would go through administration, maybe Corporate Services can, general practice, if a building's going to be used, a city or town is looking at doing something differently, what's generally a cost? I know we're just inquiring, but what's usually the sum?
Mr. Anderson, can you speak to past practices where the province has disposed of property or buildings?
In cases in the past, if it's surplus to the province, usually they'll dispose of it at a dollar. However, that, we don't really know in this case yet until we start negotiating.
Thank you, Ken. I'm in favor of a dollar.
Okay. I would also be in favor of a dollar. I'd be in favor of free, but we'll see what they say when we ask.
I'll go to five.
Councillor Radburn?
Not going to chip in on the amount of, for sale. I will be supporting this motion as well. I think this is one step on a bit of a path, a journey, that we will undertake to decide if we actually want to assume ownership of this building, and because we need other information like operating costs and interest of community partners, those kind of things need to come down the road, but this is the best place to start, I think.
Thanks very much, Councillor Radburn. Councillor Gustafson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Is there any concerns right now that that building's been sitting empty for a long time, and there's, you know, maintenance or some sort of issues going on because nobody's, or is there anybody looking after that building?
I believe Alberta Infrastructure continues to maintain the building even though it's been closed down. I think that's part of the reason why they may wish to dispose of it, because they do have ongoing operating costs even though they're not actually using it for anything. And on top of that, I believe our Facilities Department has been through there, and other administration have been through there fairly regularly over the course of the last year and a half, two years, while we've been discussing the future use of the building with the province.
Thanks, Mayor Bill.
Any other discussion or debate, questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councillor Crokin, was there anything else out of that set of minutes?
We pretty well covered everything with motions, but there was one other discussion, and it was about our outdoor pool. And we're going to be having a walk on tomorrow morning, tomorrow afternoon on our Community Living Committee. Mick Phillips is going to be giving us an update on the condition of our pool. I mean, we all love the outdoor pool, but the freeze thaw, freeze thaw, I'm not stuttering, it's happened at least three times over the winter, so it has done a substantial amount of damage to the infrastructure, the pipes, and not only the cement, but it is a fairly old facility, so we want to, we'd love to have it open immediately, but it, the safety concerns and the paint and the lead and the paint and whatever. So Mick will be giving us an update, and I know we wanted to have a tour, council wanted to have a firsthand look at the facility, because it is locked up and secured. So tomorrow, at the next council meeting, but tomorrow we'll be able to give you a further update on the pool. And that's everything, Mayor Given.
Okay, thanks very much, Councillor Crokin. Any question or comments on that committee? Seeing none, and I, oh, sir, Councillor Radburn, yes, sir?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Given. Just another, just to add to Chair Crokin's report, another item discussed at the committee meeting was the Leisure Centre Programme and Sport Development Facility. And I just, I think it's useful for our viewers to note, to be informed, the motion, the report came to committee suggesting an increase of hours to the hours that were budgeted in our three-year budget. Well, it's not three-year right now, but for the rest of this budget cycle. Our committee chose, there was a significant change in the operational costs of about 1.2 million with the new hours. So committee actually referred this to our fall budget deliberations, which would be for 2014, which I think was an astute decision, because at that time, then this request can be considered with all the other requests. And so I think that would be the right time to make, to make that decision. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Councillor Radburn. So we'd move on to the Community Safety Committee from June 4th, and Councillor Crokin, I think you handled that one for Councillor Wong, who was away, is that correct?
Yes, I believe I did. I move council receive the minutes of the Community Safety Committee meeting held June 4th.
Okay, thanks very much, Councillor Crokin. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Did we notice anything out of place? Seeing nothing, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion was carried. Councillor Crokin?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I also move council direct administration to implement amendments to policy 3275, land development to collect securities in the form of, number one, a letter of credit in the amount of 50% of the estimated construction cost of major improvements, such as storm sewer mains and roadwork, plus 100% of the estimated construction costs of minor improvements, such as park developments, landscaping, and second life, second lift of asphalt on the roads, or, number two, a performance bond as security to cover the installation and maintenance of the major improvements, and a letter of credit in the amount of 100% of the estimated construction cost for the minor improvements, and a second lift of asphalt on the roads. And I would really defer this to administration. There's, can you give us a little further explanation on that? Mr. Given?
Okay. Ms. Donnelly, do you want to speak to the motion?
There's actually a consultant that came in and met with the city administration, as well as with the local developers and other groups' acutara as well, and talked about securities, and evaluated it from a risk assessment, and that study was accepted as information and is available. The recommendation out of that was to stick to the current practice, which is this 50% on major and 100% on minor, with a new recommendation to expand what we currently collect, which is only a letter of credit, and to look at as a second option, performance bonds. So that is the recommendation that's come forward. The goal is if this is approved tonight, that administration would amend the current, the servicing agreement that we currently are entering with developers, and to implement this for, as soon as possible.
Okay, thanks very much, Ms. Donnelly. Councillor Gustafson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. For number two, 100% bond, is, is there a way that the developer could maybe put up some land as security, as opposed to coming up with all the cash? Help improve and encourage developers to develop faster and quicker?
Ms. Donnelly?
I believe the consultants discussed all those different options with the developers, and explored all the different ideas, and if they go towards, like a letter of credit does, they do put up the hard things that they have, which is one of the reasons they'd like to get away from it, whereas a performance bond gives them more flexibility. I believe that it was not recommended that we look at taking land as securities. The typical approach is used by other municipalities was discussed in this study, and a letter of credit is the most common use, with performance bonds being used in a couple of other cities. So that's the approaches put forward. Land was not something put forward.
So it hasn't been discussed, then?
You know, I wasn't in attendance when the consultant met with the developers, but the developers did show up at the committee meeting that this was put forward, and they did support these two options, and it does expand on what they can currently do. So I don't know if they brought it up, but they didn't bring it up again at the committee meeting and push it forward.
Okay, thanks very much, Ms. Donnelly.
Thank you.
Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing nobody ringing in, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councillor Crokin?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I also move council approve the Grand Prairie Regional Emergency Partnership, GPREP, Emergency Management Agreement.
Thanks very much, Councillor Crokin. And Councillor Rice?
Perhaps Councillor Crokin can refresh our memory as to what six municipalities are included in there. And with agreement?
I do believe it was Beaver Lodge, Heith, Wembley, Sexmouth, the City of, City of Grand Prairie.
And the county.
And the county, County of Grand Prairie, yep.
Thank you.
Sorry. Thank you.
Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Any other questions or comments? Seeing nothing, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councillor Crokin, I think you had one item left, one agenda item left, but it's in about four different parts. Councillor Crokin?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I move that first reading be given to Bylaw C-1291, Regional Emergency Management Bylaw.
Thanks very much, Councillor Crokin. I wonder if, is there someone in administration that could speak to the intent of this Regional Emergency Management Bylaw?
It's right here.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor Given. This is the bylaw that actually, the previous motion dealt with the agreement, and this is the bylaw that implements the agreement, and all six municipalities are passing the exact same bylaw, except for the numbers are different.
Thanks very much, Mr. City Manager. Councillor Rice?
Whoops, is this not the by, like, once we pass this bylaw, give it three readings, then those six municipalities that all are...
Sorry, Councillor Rice, excuse me, this is first reading. Administration was giving an introduction, so we'll have to, I'll call for the vote on first reading before we have questions and back and forth.
No other question, it's just clarification.
So there's a question of clarification? I think is what you're asking. So we'll have, we have a motion for first reading, we'll call for the vote on that, and then we can have discussion or debate on second reading.
Okay.
That's good clarification.
I'll call for the votes. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councillor Crokin for second reading.
Thanks, Mayor Given. I move the second reading be given to Bylaw C-1291, Regional Emergency Management Bylaw.
Okay, thanks very much, Councillor Crokin. Were there any questions of clarification that needed to be asked at this time?
I don't think so.
Councillor Rice?
So, passing this means that those six municipalities aforementioned delegate their powers or duties under the Emergency Management Act to the Grand Prairie Regional Emergency Partnership. So we in fact become part of a group and give authority to this new group in case of emergency, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Thank you.
And just, I think, just to clarify a little further, the City of Grand Prairie is obviously a part of that group and have been since the formation.
Yeah.
Councillor O'Toole?
Yes, just some more clarification, Mayor Given. The original agreement was dated in August of 1999, and there was some terminology and phrases that needed to be updated for this to go through, and now we're on the same, same playing field now.
Okay, thanks, Councillor O'Toole. Any further discussion or debate? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote on second reading. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councillor Crokin?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move that council have third reading of Bylaw C-1291, Regional Emergency Management Bylaw.
Thanks very much, Councillor Crokin. So this is a motion to have third reading of this bylaw here tonight. In order for council to have all three readings of a bylaw on a single night, you have to have this additional motion to have third reading. If this motion, for this motion to pass, it must carry unanimously, otherwise we would come back with third reading at a future council meeting.
Yes.
So, any discussion or debate on the merits of having the third reading tonight? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion does carry unanimously, so we could have third reading here tonight. Councillor Crokin?
Good, I will make that, that third reading be given to Bylaw C-1291, Regional Emergency Management Bylaw.
Thanks very much, Councillor Crokin. Any discussion or debate on third reading?
Been clarified.
Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. And that motion carries. And I think that handles every, I'm a business on our agenda from the Community Safety Committee. Were there any items that didn't come to the council table, Councillor Crokin?
Not, no. Everything was, everything's been covered.
Okay, thanks very much, Councillor Crokin. So we've moved to item 9.5, Corporate Services Committee, and I think, Councillor Gustafson, you were the acting committee chair that day. Would you care to move the set of minutes from June 4th?
Yes, Mayor Given, thank you. I'll move that council receive the minutes of the Corporate Services Committee meeting held June 4th, 2013.
Thanks very much, Councillor Gustafson. Did anyone note any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Seeing nobody ringing in with anything, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councillor Gustafson, anything you wanted to highlight from that set of minutes?
Yes.
I don't see any items of business coming from that.
Yes, we, the chair was away, so we had lots of action. We, Don Sauvay was able to tell us and develop a part of our development of a long-term capital plan, 10-year planning horizon. It will be used, only the first one to three years are formally approved by council right now. The effects of the economic outlook on the budget will be discussed, all planning documents, including forecasts and capital funding sources. Operating impacts of contemplated projects are factored into costs, and the plan is prepared in conjunction with municipalities' regular business planning and budgeting cycle. This really just adds to our prediction of the future, when we do the, what's going to be the four-year budget. Administration's going to put it all together, what it might look like in eight years and seven years and so on, so we can ultimately keep taxes down. And we talked about the benchmarking initiative, that us and some other municipalities are, 14 Alberta municipalities, Aridjikoe Lake, Fort Saskatchewan, Grand Prairie, La Dook, Madison Hatt, Spruce Grove, and Lethbridge, and Wataasman, have all ganged up to really, you know, do our homework and give us a report on how we're doing, providing municipal services around the province and mostly in Grand Prairie. We're going to, some of the 12 services, some of the services are going to look after right away, are drinking water supply, wastewater removal, garbage collection, garbage disposal, roadways, snow and ice control, transit, fire rescue, policing, park access, and recreation facility access. So we'll be able to have a report card on how we're, how we're really doing in the eyes of the municipalities. And that was all, Mayor Given.
Thanks very much, Councillor Gustafson. So that handles all of our committee business today. We had no items of correspondence, we had no public delegations that came, other than those that were dealt with as part of the public hearing. And we had no notices of motion. Councillor Rice?
I'm not sure if this requires a notice of motion, or if it's just direction to the mayor, so I wonder if I could just do some background and get some guidance from council. During our Municipal Government Day celebrations, traditionally, the auditor and the city solicitor have made modest contributions to ensure they are part of that day. We have chosen an out-of-town auditor. When they were approached about Municipal Government Day, their response was, we did not fit their criteria. I don't know if we require a notice of motion that requests the mayor write to them expressing our disappointment, and further that we have a report as how long their contract is for.
Given the intent there, I certainly wouldn't be taking that as a direction to administration, or direction, I wouldn't take that as a direction unless voted on by council. So if you wanted to pop that onto a council agenda, then you certainly would require a notice of motion, which is a very specific process of having your resolution in writing to administration, so it can be circulated to council in advance. So we won't be accepting that as a motion today, if you wish to do that process, I know that you know the process to do that. Any other items would be our council member reports, and Councillor Rice, the Urban Municipalities Association.
Okay, I met with Wade Clark, who is the executive director of Policy and Regulatory Alignment, on the single regulator, update, the single regulator comes into effect on June 17th, and I guess we wait and see what type of impact this has. Also met with the Western Centre for Economic Research regarding their research that was done in conjunction with the drafting of an AUMA energy policy, and this policy will be presented at the AUMA Mayor's Caucus this week. One of the recommendations that I found the most intriguing is the recommendation to allow municipalities to receive energy usage data for their community, and we know that our staff has been preparing a report in this regard for several months, and having difficulty accessing that information. My appointment as the Utility Consumer Advocate Board of Directors was renewed. That's my, oh. That's my, oh.
Thanks very much, Counselor Rice. I know the, we had a report for the downtown BRZ. Counselor Gustafson?
Thanks, Mayor Given. This weekend, June 15th, is the Sizzling Summer Sidewalk Sale, so dig out your pillowcases and dig deep in your jeans and come on down and enjoy the sale. Also, on the 15th, at noon, two people, two loving, kind people are getting married downtown, shutting down the streets, and it's gonna be the best, biggest wedding ever to be held downtown. So, good luck and all the best to that lucky couple. Also, clear your calendars and quit your job. July 18th to the 21st is the Street Performers Festival downtown as well. Be prepared for that, and watch right away, there's gonna be the patios. The local sidewalk patios are going to be set up at Tito's and Laurel's, hopefully this weekend, so you can go and enjoy a nice meal on the street, on the patio. Thank you, Mayor Given.
Thanks very much, Counselor Gustafson. I believe that handles all of our council member reports from agencies, boards, and commissions, and so we'll start with Council Roundtable and Counselor Gustafson, since you had your microphone on last, we might as well start with you, and we'll go around counterclockwise.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Aside from my regular scheduled committee meetings, I've been working really hard at my full-time, regular job, so I have nothing to report this time.
Thanks very much, Counselor Gustafson. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Mayor Given. On May 28th, I went to Stompied Bust-Out BBQ proclamation reading at Duke's, and hats off to Downtown Association and to Duke's, to Bernie Benson from the city, that is a big, big volunteer of the Stompied, and I guess it was a high-volume year, the most ever, I think. So they, they had a resounding success. So I was glad to be there. As well as, I attended the FCM Conference in Vancouver with my wife Tina and many other councillors and the mayor, and Gary Roth, Director Gary Roth, May 30th, 31st, June 1st, 2nd, and 3rd. And I always love to go to different events and stuff, but with little ones, and when you're gone five days, you're really glad to get home. Some of the highlights of it for me was, one time when I was 10, I asked, can I go see this individual coming across the ferry from Newfoundland? And the individual told me, nah, he's just looking for attention. And it was Terry Fox. I never got to see him and run with him. And I was 10, but I did Rick Hansen, when he was going through Wheels, a motion tour in 87 or 88, went through Etzen, and my gym teacher at the time, his son was in a wheelchair, and we went probably eight or 10 kilometers. And he's really inspirational to see speak, inspirational speaker, leadership, and he's actually up to one of my heroes in Canada. And to see him again was marvelous. And I always tell everybody, when I did see him at that time as a youngster, his arms were built like bricks, like he was solid upstairs, like he was, went so many kilometers around the world, and I got to have a chance to do that, so I was proud. Another one I got to see is, as well there, was Justin Trudeau, and he spoke a couple things that was intriguing to me, was about middle class, how the economy's almost doubled in size in 10 or 12 years, and middle class has only got about 10% difference, pay raise. So, I mean, hopefully he can someday be a great prime minister and change some of that. So that, that was a couple of them, but there was tons and tons that you could talk about the event, and I was glad to go, because I didn't go the year before. And it was actually sunny for a couple of days, because every time I've been to Vancouver, it's been cloudy. And as well, I went June 5th to Tim Horton's Camp Day, and since the first Tim Hortons opening in Grand Prairie, I don't know, it was 95, 96, by Remax Building, I've never been behind the counter. And I'll tell you, that one hour was a blur, and they actually were really careful with me, and I, I just poured the coffee, and when I thought I cut up, someone ordered a box for 10 coffee, and we're behind again, and they really did really good with me to work out, but the main thing was for, is for the kids going to camps that can't afford it, and get them to learn something culturally. And we have one in Alberta, Caninasque, I do believe, and there's one in Nova Scotia, and Kentuckyville, they have a few, and one, one or two in Ontario. So thank you, Tim Hortons, for letting me be involved in that. Thank you, Mayor Given.
Counselor Edmond?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Thank you, Mayor Given. May 28th, I also attended the Stompied BBQ and proclamation, and on the 29th in the evening, I attended the CKC Sports Field Master Plan Community Consultation. This was the first, I guess, consultation with respect to the overall plan. A number of the questions were, and the community was well represented, a number of sporting groups and actually neighbors attended the session. Some of the questions were more of a more detailed nature, and that will be, an opportunity for those to be addressed will be, will be later. This will be, this is kind of the first overview, and then there'll be a more detailed plan, and then there'll be some opportunity for consultation at that time. And then I also attended the FCM Conference of, I guess, speakers, workshops, study tours. Found it most valuable, and I thought Vancouver did a great job of hosting the event. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Edmond. Counselor O'Toole?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. On the 28th, I also attended the Duke's Bust-Out Celebration and Proclamation Reading. And I want to also thank Wapiti Gravel Suppliers for being a big donator to this Bust-Out. Later that night, I attended the EMS Foundation Annual General Meeting. Guest speaker was Kim Rothier, and she spoke on a Project Rock Society, which is a society to promote the use of AEDs in schools and also in businesses. The executive director, Lauren Lavalley, gave a presentation on what their year in review and what accomplished. Also, there was a check allocation and AEDs, and I can tell you that the Par T program was awarded some money, as well as an AED, the Good Fair Hall, Wahaola School, and the EMS Cadets. On the 29th, I attended the Canadian Home Builders Technical Luncheon. They had a guest speaker from Workplace Health and Safety, and his discussion was about violations and fines that are being possibly put into place later this year in the industry. That night, I also gave out a bicycle at the Stompied. I attended the Chair Leader Supper Wind-Up, and I also attended the CKC Sports Open House for the Field Master Plan. On the 30th, I, I attended the Unmanned Vehicle Presentation at the Fairview College. There was a number of companies that have unmanned vehicles, they can be anything from a track vehicle to a helicopter, remote control, to actually a remote control sonar system. People from all over Alberta and BC did presentations. Friday, the 31st, the 1st, 2nd, and 3rd of June, I was at the AUM, or the FCM, and one of the conference meetings I talked, was at, was the Vancouver Airport. And just to give you some kind of an idea on how many people go through the Vancouver Airport, it's 17.6 million people. They call themselves Pier 21 of the West. 227,200 tons of cargo get shipped through that airport. They go to 100, there's 122 destinations that you can go to from Vancouver with 60, 68 different airlines. On the 5th, I, I went to the Climate Change Presentation over at the library at Theresa Sergeant Hall. And also, on the 6th, I, I attended the Municipal Government Day meeting, which is going to take place, the Municipal Govern Day on Wednesday, and it's gonna be sunny and shiny, and there's gonna be lots of people there, lots of hot dogs and hamburgers. So if you've got children, or if you want to come down and see what the city of Grand Prairie has to offer you in weeks of equipment and programs and stuff like that, please come to Muska CP Park. We've tried a different format this year, and it's gonna be bigger and better than even last year. I also attended the River of Death and Discovery Meeting, and that was also on the 6th. On the 7th, I attended the Aqua Terra Annual AGM. And on the 8th, it happened to be Saturday, the Grand Prairie Cricket Association had an open house to show off the new field that they have to operate out of. Mayor Given gave a proclamation reading of some kind, played the, the batter, and I was the person that threw the ball, and I threw a curveball, went behind him, he missed. And I threw another ball that went way outside, and he missed, but the third time, he did hit the ball.
I think technically I didn't swing at either of those.
Well, you were, you were shaken in the boots, that's the problem. But I did my job very well, that's all I'm saying. Anyhow, there was 150 people that were very proud to see this take place, and I want to thank the city of Grand Prairie staff for making all the obligations of making everything go well for this program. It's the first cricket field north of Edmonton, and I think this is a landmark day, and I'm looking forward to the Warriors and the Dinosaurs playing regular games here, so thank you very much.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Counselor Monroe?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I also attended the Stompied Bust-Out BBQ down at Duke's. I attended the Canadian Home Builders Association Builder Lunch, where, yes, Occupational Health and Safety did their presentation on upcoming tickets. As I understand it, we are now getting two more Occupational Health and Safety Officers in the Grand Prairie region, and they now have the ability to issue tickets on-site. So it was very informative to see what the home builders will be having to, to do to going forward. I attended the Chamber of Commerce Mixer at Hanson Ford and the Aqua Terra Building. Great mixer, lots of people there. And then on the, later that day, I also attended the Bridge Network Graduation Ceremony, and I just wanted to say congratulations to Kristen Anderson, Santana Armstrong, Larissa Boisenote, and Melissa Hoglund, the four graduates of the Bridge Network this year. These girls worked incredibly hard to get there, and this should be applauded for, for graduating. Had the honor of doing the Seniors Week Proclamation with the Lieutenant Governor of Alberta, Don Ethel. Great turnout for the Seniors Week Proclamation. We had approximately 350 people there. I was there from about 10 o'clock until 2 o'clock, barbecuing and serving ice cream and all kinds of fun stuff, so, fun time. On the 4th, I was in Nighthawk Budgeting Sessions, putting together our budget for the 2013, 2014 year. And just a reminder that the Nighthawk Annual General Meeting is actually tomorrow night out at Nighthawk Recreation Area at 5:15, so if anyone wishes to attend, we would certainly welcome you to come out there. And there will be more information as far as our, our numbers for this previous season will be released at our AGM tomorrow, and then the budget going forward will be a discussion that council will have to have at a later time. Also attended the Climate Change Adaptation Seminar, found it very informative. Did a tour with Counselor O'Toole on Friday of the Bear Creek Pool, went down and saw firsthand what kind of issues the pool is having. Definitely a lot of heaving on the deck. The pool shell, or I guess tank is, you know, I'm not, I'm not an expert, but it's obvious that it is in some pretty rough shape. And, and then got to also toured around the mechanical area, and, you know, for a place that is 50 years old, it, it looks like it's in good condition, the mechanical part of it, however, I think they, they are struggling to keep this, this pool alive, so it'll be interesting to see what kind of information comes back, so that we can make informed decisions on the fate of the Bear Creek Pool. And then this last weekend, I went out to the Devon Safety Expo at the Safety City, and toured a few of the booths with my son, and had a fun time, and beat the crowds out there. I think there wasn't a lot of people out there yet, and, but it looks like they were set up to feed quite a few people. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Monroe. Counselor Crokin?
Thanks, Mayor Given. And just to close off your report, nice haircut, Counselor Monroe. And as councillors, we always stick up for other councillors, and Counselor Gustafson was working so hard, he forgot he was out at Bust-Out, and just to add that on there for you, buddy. And again, the Bust-Out was really good at Duke's. Thanks again, of course, Wapiti Sand and Gravel, Bernie Benson and, and her team, the four hamburgers were really good. Later on that day, at 5 o'clock or 5:30, I attended the Annexation Open House at Muska CP Park. I really want to thank staff that was there. They kept me in line when I was explaining how it was all working. They actually did the, the legwork on it. I was just there to, they had some nice snacks there, so thanks again to the staff that worked overtime, and that was really appreciated. On Wednesday, the 29th, I attended the Centre 2000 Management Meeting, and then on Thursday, I guess, also with other members of council, was in Vancouver. And we had the opportunity to hear many, many speeches, but the one speech that I, I really appreciated was from the Honorable Dennis Label. He's the Minister of Transportation, Infrastructure, and Communities. He's, he was really speaking in regards to our federal municipal relationships, that the growing and the strengthening of FCM's ever ongoing lobbying of the government is really working well, and he's looking forward to working with us in the, in the future. And we also had the Honorable Member of the Opposition, Mr. McClair, speak, and the other opposition member, Justin Trudeau, was also speaking. And the highlight again that was mentioned, I really appreciated Rick Hansen, the man in motion, telling us about limitless opportunities for municipalities and provinces working together. And he, he said, like his mentor, Terry Fox, working with his handicap, Michael J. Fox, working with his handicap and bringing it forward, and people like Christopher Reeve, and he went on with, with a number of them. So, he was definitely a highlight on his wheelchair up in front of us, back and forth for a couple hours, really good. June the 5th, I attended the GP Tourism Association Meet and Greet BBQ at Centre 2000. That was well-attended. A number of people from different, different communities, the Chamber, and, and on and on. February, the, Friday, the 6th, I attended Tender Opening, which was some really good things that are happening down the road. And the reason I didn't attend a couple of the other things on Saturday was I went to my grandson's ninth grade graduation in Beaver Lodge. And that's everything, Mayor Given.
Thanks very much, Counselor Crokin. Counselor Rice?
Yes, I, I too attended the Federation of Canadian Municipalities, took in the Innovative Infrastructure Workshop, that was very interesting, as well as the Infrastructure and Energy Policy Forum, and the Crime Prevention Workshop. The Crime Prevention Workshop was, was really amazing, as I sat there and I realized that here in Grand Prairie, our crime prevention team is way more innovative and will move forward to initiate projects way faster than the average across Canada, and so it was, it was a source of, of great pride. Attended the Health and Safety BBQ here in Grand Prairie, and I want to say thank you to our staff who serve, volunteer on that committee to ensure our, our employees are, you know, have the proper equipment and, and procedures to ensure their health and safety at work.
Thanks very much, Counselor Rice. Obviously, a number of items that I attended have already been mentioned, so I'll try to be brief on those ones. May 28th, I also attended the Stompied Bust-Out. On the 29th, I attended at the EMS Station, once again for a ride-along in celebration of EMS Week. Once again, I must be the lucky charm, there were zero calls, everybody in Grand Prairie was completely safe, so I'm going to, you can all be relieved, I'm going to actually move in full-time to the EMS Station, and there'll be no longer any call for the use of those vehicles. But I did have the opportunity to speak with some of the practitioners about the growth in EMS service and the change over time. service and the change over time. And that was actually really insightful for me. So I certainly appreciated that opportunity. From the thirtieth to about the third, I was also in Vancouver at the FCM. One of the sessions I participated in was the Study Tour on Transit Oriented Design. Obviously, transit in the Vancouver metro area is significantly different than transit in Grand Prairie. But some of the same principles, I think, certainly could apply, and especially with the topic of discussion around our transit transit terminal. So I certainly appreciated that opportunity. And one of the other things that I found most interesting that hasn't been mentioned about FCM was the trade show. This year, I found lots of interesting products and services that I think are directly applicable back here in Grand Prairie in particular. There is some new parking technology. There is information on plug-in electric charging stations for electric cars, and a company that installs them. And then there were also some online citizen budgeting tools. And so a number of really innovative things that I think may have some use here in Grand Prairie. Back home on the fifth, I was here at City Hall in Council Chambers to welcome a class of kindergarten kids from a Cole St. Gerard, very insightful children. I identified myself as the head dog catcher. None of them believed it. I said I was a firefighter. None of them believed it. And finally, they identified me correctly as the mayor, but they certainly knew what was going on, and certainly appreciated the opportunity to welcome them into City Hall. Later that day, I also attended the Climate Change Adaptation Presentation. One thing that hasn't been mentioned, though, I think, was the focus of this presentation was really around the direct impacts that climate change will and is having on the peace country, specifically as well as the Prairie provinces. This researcher was based out of the University of Saskatchewan, excuse me, University of Regina, and had direct ad on what is actually happening to the rivers and the climate in our area. And one of the insightful things, I think, that he said and was that when we're trying to understand climate and weather, and people get things that are happening with weather confused with what's happening with climate, weather is what you get and climate is what you expect. So it was a different way to think of it. And that actually was a pretty useful little thing for me. On the sixth, I attended a partner scoping session, which was facilitated by the province of Alberta, had all had all of the school boards that are represented in our area in attendance, and the city of Grand Prairie discuss opportunities for partnerships around capital planning. On the seventh, I was at South Bear Creek Park to welcome the Board of the Canadian Native Fastball Association to Grand Prairie. Obviously, we're getting set for the Native, the Canadian Native Fastball Championships held in early August. There were board members here from British Columbia, Alberta, and Saskatchewan. Certainly appreciated welcoming, having the opportunity to welcome them to Grand Prairie. I can report that they were very impressed with our facilities, and were really looking forward to the tournament. They, I asked about the number of teams they expected, and they said that they confirmed that we could expect in that range of sixty to seventy fastball teams in town for the tournament. So I think the entire community really needs to be prepared for that start of August weekend. Later that day, I was also at the Aquaterra Shareholders Meeting. And then on Saturday, Saturday, the eighth, I attended the Devon Safety Expo at Safety City, the Highland Games. And I want to thank the Highland Games organizers for keeping alive the Scottish heritage in the community, and also for recognizing longtime families who've contributed to the region. This time around, they recognize the Kriar family. And so I saw a former city staff member, Larry Kriar, there, and it was great to see his clan recognized. Later that day, I was at the Harley Davidson for ribbon cutting and cake cutting, as the dealership has changed hands. And then, as was previously mentioned by Counselor O'Toole, I was there to help inaugurate the cricket pitch. I would say I do want to pass on that when there was a bowler, the guy who throws the ball, who had some experience and was able to put it in what I would call the strike zone, I knocked it out of the park. I just want to say. But the other thing that I found really interesting, and I think is worthwhile for the community to know, is that the other dignitary that was there was actually the president of the Alberta Health Sciences Association. So that's the medical association that represents anybody that isn't a doctor or nurse that works in healthcare. And she was here because the Health Sciences Association also sponsored the formation of the cricket pitch. And they did that because there are so many of their members here in Grand Prairie that are passionate about the sport, that they saw it as a really good tie-in. So I think it really speaks to how different sports are, different, people from different places are attractive to different sports, but we shouldn't overlook any one of them because any one of them could be a key to attracting somebody to Grand Prairie. And today, I had the opportunity to go to the Stars of the Hangar and on behalf of council, present the big novelty check to Stars with the recognition of the fifty thousand dollar operational commitment that council had previously budgeted for. So it was a pleasure to do that on your behalf, council. And I believe that that has taken the city of Grand Prairie's commitment over the years to a fairly significant level of which we'll be hearing some more about into the future. And with that, I believe that's everything. Oh, excuse me. Thanks. The city manager had reminded me that the reason that folks are in blue, we wanted to obviously promote Municipal Government Day. Counselor O'Toole was doing his Municipal Government Day pitch. It is this week, and certainly want to encourage everybody to come out and join us. It's gonna be a lot of fun, but we want to be wearing the city, representing the city blue. And so thanks very much for that, city manager Greg. With that, we'll call our city council meeting adjourned.